My secretary, Father Rawl.
Rick Sirandrew.
Here.
Recording in progress.
Rick Sirandrew.
Here.
Phil Roger. Ed Dalton here. Ben Giannetta. Roger Mitchell.
Here.
Gary Swingle.
Here.
Jeff Franton.
Here.
Davis Pro.
Here.
Okay, our first application tonight is application. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm gonna sit, uh... I'll sit Jeff for Roger. Gary for... Who else called? Benny. We're gonna change. Okay. First application tonight is application number 2024-1 of Catherine Camara for a variance of four feet to a side yard property line setback to construct a 15 by 28-foot addition to an existing single-family home to be located six feet from a side property line at 31 Cottage Place, Oakville, Connecticut, in an RG residential zoning district. I'm gonna read the ground rules for this public hearing tonight. The applicant or his representative will make his formal presentation to the board stating his specific hardship and precisely why this merits a variance from the zoning regulations of the Town of Watertown. All comments, discussions, and observations shall be made through the chair after proper recognition by the chairman. This is necessary to ensure that only one person at a time speaks on any issue, thus making it easier for everyone to understand and for clearer legal transcription. All persons addressing the commission shall begin by first clearly stating their name and address for the record. If necessary, the person may be asked to spell his or her name for the record. Following the presentation of the application, the Zoning Board of Appeals will ask specific questions of the applicant. After the board has asked its questions of the applicant, I should then allow members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of this application or against it to address the board. I shall then allow the applicant to respond to the comments of the members of the general public. I shall then allow any members of the general public who wish to pursue... Who wish... I shall then allow any members of the general public who wish to present any additional information or clarifying discussion to do so at that time. I shall then provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to these different additional remarks or if he or his representative so wishes. The Zoning Board of Appeals has 35 days from the date the public hearing commences to complete the public hearing. The board may ask the applicant for a 35-day extension of the public hearing period if the board requires any additional information or wishes to schedule a site walk to observe the situation for themselves. The Zoning Board of Appeals has 65 days from the date when the public hearing is closed to render its decision. The board may or may not make its decision tonight at its regular meeting following the public hearing. You may stay for the regular meeting if you wish, or you may leave at the end of the public hearing and contact the zoning office the following morning to determine the status of your application. Again, application number 2024-1 of Catherine Camara for a variance of four feet to a side yard property line setback to construct a 15 by 28-foot addition to an existing single-family home located six feet from a side property line at 31 Cottage Place, Oakville, Connecticut, in an RG residential zone district. Is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Gotta read the legal notice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, she could... She could come up. Come on. I'm gonna have the secretary read the legal notice.
Town of Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals' legal notice. The Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Watertown will hold public hearings at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, January 24, 2024, at Watertown Town Hall Council Chambers, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear and act upon the following application. Application number 2024-1 of Catherine Camara for a variance of four feet to a side property line setback for construction of a 15 by 28-foot addition to an existing single-family home to be located six feet from a side property line at 31 Cottage Place, Oakville, Connecticut, in an RG residential zoning district. Sections 12.8 of the Watertown zoning regulation requires minimum 10-foot setback from side property lines for a principal building in an R7, the residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, 11th day of January 2024, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, the 18th day of January 2024. Ed Dalton, Secretary.
Uh, Ned, you wanna also read the letter that we got? From, I guess it's a neighbor.
Letter addressed to Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, regarding application for 31 Cottage Place, Oakville. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals members, I live across the street from Catherine Camara's residence at 31 Cottage Place, and I support her application for a variance to the side property line setback. There are seven identical houses on Cottage Place that were built circa 1917, mine included. They were originally small, five-room Cape-style homes with very little storage space. Each of the houses have some type of addition built to enhance the homes in the modern day. The variance will allow an extension to an already-existing addition toward the back of the property, and it will not change the frontal appearance of 31 Cottage Place. By allowing this variance, Catherine Camara can enhance her home, which will raise the value of the homes on Cottage Place. Sincerely, Loretta Lambert.
There's another letter too, isn't there? Thought I saw another letter.
Yeah.
It's not addressed to the zoning board.
No? To her?
Yeah.
Did you get all your green cards out?
Yes.
Uh, do you have them tonight?
Yes.
Wanna give them to, uh... Probably should. Read that into the room.
I have a letter from Conrad Sansucci, 116 Ball Farm Road, Oakville, Connecticut, January 16, 2024. Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place, Oakville, Connecticut. Received your certified mail letter from the Town of Watertown Board of Appeals regarding your application for a variance of four feet to a side property line setback to construct a 15-foot by 28-foot addition to your house. As I picture your addition, it will be extending from the existing westerly extension of your house, which is already a side property line setback from the number 21 property line and will be added northerly by 15 feet, then easterly by 28 feet to the existing side of your house. I believe this will be an excellent improvement to the building, incorporating this house extension to accommodate a bathroom and a washer and dryer system on the first floor as an elderly benefit will generate increase in property value in the existing area. I have no objection to this proposal. Good luck. Sincerely, Conrad Sansucci.
Okay. Well, can you state your name?
Uh, yes, Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville.
Can you briefly tell us exactly what you wanna do and what your hardship is?
I will. I do wanna point out there was another letter, but I could read it myself, or you should have another one.
I see a letter from you.
Yeah, there was another one from an Imani Kumey that I had sent in originally. But I will leave it with them, and I could read it also if you want. But you tell me what you wanna do. But that doesn't have to be right now, does it?
Roseanne, was there another letter?
Do you want me to read it?
You can read it if you want.
Okay. It's from Imani Kumey at 21 Cottage Place in Oakville. It's directed to the Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the application for 31 Cottage Place. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals members, I'm writing on behalf of the application of Catherine Camara for a variance at 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I own the property at 21 Cottage Place, abutting Ms. Camara's property, and I have absolutely no objection to her obtaining a variance of four feet to the side property line setback. She already has an addition to her property with that setback. Her proposal will enhance her property, which in turn enhances mine. Very truly yours, Imani Kumey. And I'll leave that letter with...
Sure.
Today.
Okay. Wanna say your, uh... What your hardship is?
Yes, so my hardship is...
I see you wrote a letter.
Pardon me?
I see you wrote a letter.
Well, I was told I was supposed to do that.
Yeah, right.
So, that's what I did. So, um, the hardship is that I have had a knee injury back in 2012. I've had knee surgery. I've had injections. You know, I'm doing okay at this point. I'm managing it. But the idea is that probably down the line I'm gonna possibly need a knee replacement. It's difficult when it acts up, that I have to go up and down the stairs. The only bathroom in the house is on the second floor. Um, I don't know if you know that area, but there's seven houses. They're very small. I think we are the original tiny house. So, with no bathroom on the first floor, and I have another issue that makes it very difficult is that I have to stay hydrated. I have to drink a lot of water. Hence, I need the bathroom a lot. Hence, I need to go up and down the stairs a lot, and when my knee is acting up and bothering me, it's difficult. So therefore, uh, I mean, it's just a good idea anyway to have two bathrooms. That's my hardship, is I need to get a bathroom on the first floor because it could become the day when I'm going to have a problem and not be able to get up the stairs. So, um, that's what I'm looking for, and, uh... All these houses have had additions because they're so small. Mine had the addition before I moved in, and I didn't know it was not up to regulation. I didn't know that when I first moved in. So, um, I do already have that side addition, and what I'm asking for is if I take that back, I can square off my house. Otherwise, I have these blocks and pieces. I can just make it, as you've seen on this drawing, just squares it off. Um, and it's kinda logical of where the bathroom would go because it'd be on the side of the kitchen, and for the purposes of the pipe piping, it would just be an easy fit to put the bathroom there and just fix the back porch area to make it larger.
Is this entire addition?
Go ahead.
Is here, is all the...
Correct.
What's the 6x8 piece?
That's a back porch. Yeah, it'll be changed to that. That would be basically back porch back there. Um, right now, the washer and dryer is on that porch. It's kinda, it's very small or whatever, so I'd be incorporating laundry, bathroom laundry room than the back porch. Correct.
That's that 15-foot part there? 15 by 8?
No, actually, that's... Well, to be honest with you, I have to talk to some... You know, this could change. My problem was, I don't know what I can do until yet I know if I can do this. So I kinda had to come to you first to figure it out before we lay it out. My idea is, um, where... What exists, where you see the 8-foot number, is the bathroom is gonna come after that because I'm going to put... That's like a den. I'm gonna make that, put a walk-through closet there into the bathroom, the laundry area, so that's gonna go back. I'm not 100% sure if it's gonna even be 15 feet. I might cut it to 12. I don't know that... But I had to ask for it because I don't really have the layout right now. So the bathroom laundry room is gonna be on that side there. Um, and then the rest would be the enclosed porch.
So that's there right now, the 15 by 8?
The 15 by 8 exists. Yeah, that's the... That's already existed. I didn't put it there. That's why it's already over the line. Pardon me?
That's all enclosed.
That is a den. The 15 by 8 is a den. The 6 by 8 in the back is a porch with a laundry area on it. Or a washer and dryer, I should say. It's not really laundry area.
You can see it in the picture, Rick.
Yeah, I see it. Yeah, I've been looking at the picture nice.
Not that one, this one.
Yeah, yeah. See it right there? Yep. Anybody got any questions?
Let's see here. It's a bathroom and a laundry room. Well, it's large for just a bathroom and a laundry.
And it's a back porch. It's a back porch area.
It's gonna be enclosed.
That's enclosed, yeah, yeah, yep. Sorta, you know, mudroom area, and then, you know...
Living space.
Pardon me?
Living space or outside space?
Living space. It's heated. That back porch has heat on it. So, you know, I mean, I don't know if I'm calling... I mean, to me, it's porch area. You enter on it. I mean, I will be able to sit out there. But it does have heat. I'm not... You know, I guess, I guess I just picture it that way because that's what I have now. I'm just making it larger. So... And I do wanna point out something that on this colored map that you have, I talked to Musa about it, and he realized it. It's not that the red markings are not accurate because it's got...
No, I remember.
Okay, good. That's what he said. Because it's got the red line, like, basically on top of my house, and it's inside my fence. So obviously, you know, it needs to be on the other side. But I just, I didn't know if you looked at that and were to say, you know, what's the story there?
Are you gonna provide a survey?
You want a survey?
Well, typically, we would have a site plan or a survey plan or some sort, especially when we're as close to a sideline.
Um, they didn't ask me for that. I mean, it's marked off. If you went to the property, I have the line marked off, demarcated for the side there. I have it posted, and the line is there. I don't know if you are wanting a survey, you have to let me know. I'd have to get one.
You know, when you're as close to things, it's hard to assume.
But the line is marked. Musa has seen it.
How is it marked?
It's got the posts and a line running through it. And Musa has been out there. He saw that it's marked. So if you were to go out there, you can see the marking. I mean, I know it's snowed, but I think the line is still up.
So the posts, or surveyors' posts, or...
Yeah.
Pipes, or rebar, or something?
Correct, yep.
So you know it's... So it's already been done?
Yeah.
Put there by somebody, so, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Why is it... I haven't seen the property yet, but I'm trying to understand why you need the variance. Is there not room to build whatever you need within the...
On that side is my driveway.
Right.
So...
But was the... How many feet? I mean, where... That's why I'm asking about the survey because I don't really know. You know, driveway doesn't show, or...
Um, okay. I don't know if you wanna look at that colored thing that I just showed you, the colored picture. My driveway's on the side there. I think you can see that. And you could see the white fence there. That fence is my driveway. So I have no... I can't go on that side.
That's just the light of the house.
Yeah, driveway.
That post with the line, that's the property line, or that's...
The post with the line that's there, it's the property line. Yep, you'll see it.
Cause I drove by it today.
Did you see it?
Yeah, I saw the post with that tree in the way. I didn't see where it was in relation to that 8 by 15. Is that a porch, or is that a part of the house?
When you were looking at the... So you were only looking at the front?
Well, if you're looking at the front of the house, according to this, it's got a 15-foot room this way and 8-foot wide. Is that a porch, or is that a...
That's a room. It's got a window. It's the den. You're looking at the den. And then you saw that the line was marked on the side of that that went down. And so it's taking that den back farther. So you don't see it from the street. It's taking that.
Yeah, I didn't cross into the yard. I don't walk through people's yard without getting permission first. I just drove by it. And as I saw, the tree was there. I couldn't see that one that was sticking out.
I also went by and... So the white stockade fence, that is the property line, correct?
It's not... It's inside the property line. It's not on the property line.
So that's on your property?
Correct.
Your fence, so it's on?
It's my fence, yep. It's on... It's inside the property line.
Okay, yeah.
Just 21 Cottage Place owns the lot next...
Next to me, yeah.
Is that a legal building lot anymore?
No, that is no longer... They've...
Incorporated into...
It's incorporated, so it's one lot. Yeah, there's actually...
Jim, when I went by, it looks like the two... Looks like they put two lots together and made one big lot right next to you.
Correct, on 21.
That was one of the concerns we had. Is this a nonconforming lot?
Is mine a lot? No, it's conforming, but that addition was nonconforming. But that was before I moved in. And I didn't know that it was nonconforming until I wanted to do something. I came years ago and talked to Musa about it, and that's when I found out because I had always wanted to try to take that back. And that's when I found out it was a problem.
I guess the only question I have for Mark is, do we know if the size of this addition exceeds the land coverage requirement for that zone? Cause you have an existing house, and then she's proposing a 28 by 9 addition, or, you know... And the lot is very small. Would that exceed the land coverage? And Catherine, the only reason I'm asking is, if it does, you'd have to come back for another variance. I'm trying to...
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it does only because the person next to me has an extension that's farther than that, and we're on the same size lot. But, you know, that's fine. You can ask.
All I wanna make sure is that, you know, the square footage of the house and the addition doesn't exceed the land coverage requirement when, you know, you...
It's gotta be close.
It's gotta be close because you might... I'm just, just for example, you know, if the addition was a foot smaller, it would... You would meet all the... I just wanna make sure that we understand exactly what we're...
Is the driveway included in that? Driveway's included in that, too, isn't it?
The total... I'm looking at the application. The total improved coverage, uh, surface coverage is listed at 25%. Uh, the total building coverage is listed as 12.8%. I can look that up and see. Give me a minute.
Well, it's not doubling the house, so it's not gonna...
But that 12.8 is before the addition or after the addition?
Catherine, do you know?
I doubt... Where are we looking at that?
On the application, it's...
On the application.
Question 13 and 14?
Right.
On the, uh... On your application?
Right.
Um, great, I don't have... I don't have 13 and 14.
Jack, this picture, it's really out of proportion.
You said 25% is allowable?
No, I said this was listed on the application.
I didn't catalyze it, so...
What's allowable?
I didn't know at the time. Musa added that in for me. I didn't know at the time.
So that's the total after the addition?
I believe so.
Okay. That would make sense. That's fine. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put 875 square feet of...
Total, with the addition.
The house and the addition.
Yes, you're not even...
And the driveway.
And the driveway.
You're still 25%. 6,500 is...
So what is it? It's like just almost 7,000 square foot on the lot, so...
Right. So it's 25%.
Right, probably... How big is the house?
The house is about 1,000, so...
Maybe 30 by... About 30 by 28.
You can't exceed that. You need 75 for a house. You gotta know the measurement of the driveway. Single...
Look, we're just a hair away.
I'm actually having it repaved in the spring. It's a... I don't know what...
How many square feet is?
It's gonna be 10 feet across. I don't know how long it is. I only know what the... I only know what the width is.
It's not 100.
Probably saying, it looks like...
Probably three... It's probably three car lengths.
It's at least three.
It go right behind the house? The driveway? You go past the house?
Goes past the house.
Past the house?
Yeah, yeah, past the house.
You're still under it. You got 700 square feet of driveway. If it's 70 feet long, that's 7... So it's 10 wide, that's 700. You got 800 on the house. You're still under.
It's one car width?
Yeah, she said 10 feet. 10 feet.
Okay, it sounds like we're okay.
She's okay.
Yeah.
She's okay. Okay. Any other questions? You good?
Sorry, I didn't have more technical for you guys. I'm not real good with that.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Now, it's gonna look stupid, but I gotta... Does anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Do I have a motion?
Oh, I got it. Is anyone online?
So we're good. Have a motion? Close?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to the regular meeting. We don't need to run Nicole. You want to run the, we don't need to run the, we don't call again, do we, Matt?
No.
Okay. All right, action on minutes.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes for November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, old business, none. New business, application number twenty twenty-four dash one of Catherine Camera for a variance of four feet to a side property line setback for construction of fifteen by twenty-eight, fifteen foot by twenty-eight foot addition to an existing single family home to be located six feet from a side property, from a side property line at Thirty One Cottage Place, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R G residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for you, maximum building coverage in that zone is forty percent and a maximum total coverage is sixty percent.
Oh, wow.
Oh.
So, according to what's on the sheet, it's well under.
In an R seventy zone?
R G.
It's what it says in the thing. It says R seventy, but, which it's not, but.
No, it's an R, R G zone.
Well, they figured she was under, right?
What?
Figured she was under.
No, it's way under. If it's that, it was under if it was twenty-five percent. And now it's seventy percent.
Okay.
Sixty percent.
Thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
Do I have a motion on the floor to, oh, I don't have a motion yet. Anyone?
I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, I believe the hardship is actually the size of the lot. No matter, you know, no matter where the owner tries to put an addition, they would need to come, you know, to us to, to get some type of relief. So I think the, I think the size of the lot.
Could it go to the other side of the lot? The same, which had the same size? The driveways there. The driveways there. But the driveway goes to what? It's just out into the backyard, isn't it?
No, it was right past the house.
Right, right, right. But I mean, it doesn't have to stay there, right?
But if, but if you took that, if you, if you shifted that over, you shifted that addition over, she would just need, she'd need a variance on that side of the.
Aesthetically.
Does she?
Yeah.
What's the subject?
You would just, you would just be asking, instead of having it on the left side of the house, you'd be asking for it on the right side of the house.
But it's, but it's not the.
Go by the, go by this.
By what?
Go by the, the overview. Jim made a good point that the, that the picture, the hand drawn picture is out of scale.
It's out of scale.
So if you look at the overhead drawing.
It still looks like there's twenty feet on the right instead of. So that's to the red line. The red line's not right.
The red line.
No, I understand, but there's still a lot more room on the right than there is on the left, no? That's not right on either of those maps.
I, I, I actually went.
If you look at the white fence, the white fence is on, is hers.
Right.
So the white fence is, it's like just over ten feet from the house. On the right, there's only ten feet too?
Yeah, yeah.
So on both sides, there's ten feet.
Correct.
I mean, a little more, maybe twelve on the right side.
And also aesthetically.
So no matter, no matter.
Oh, no, okay.
This makes more sense aesthetically.
That's why, that's why I went to the property to really look at it.
Part of our charge is to be conforming with the other houses.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And her hardship, other part of her hardship is that, you know, we're all getting old. To go up and downstairs, to go to the bathroom is kind of, you know, so that, that's part of her hardship also. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the second. You have something to say?
Motion approved.
Do any of us have anything to add?
No.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, there's a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go build your addition.
I need very much.
Not now, though. Might get wet.
Wait, are you there?
Stairway going upstairs is anything like mine. It's a bear.
What the hell did I do with the damn? Oh, man, I tell you. Okay. Communications and Bills, reappointment letter for Mr. Jeff Franson. You want to read that into the record?
Accept and file it like usual?
Okay.
Yeah, make, make a motion. Make a, make a motion. We accept and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Why don't we do both?
Yep.
Reappointment letter for Mr. Jeff Franson and a reappointment letter for Mr. James Pro.
Make a motion. We accept and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now land use commission's meeting dates. Are we all set with that?
Looks good.
Everybody happy with that?
What, can, Mark, can we, can we designate one or two months as, as training? You know, we wouldn't take any applications, but you would use that time for training for the, for the commission, because the, you know, state's requiring us to have training, so.
Right. I was going to bring that up, so this is, might be a good opportunity. First, may I ask, has anybody been able to take advantage of any of the online training that we had offered in, in twenty twenty-three?
There was no, there were no classes offered in twenty twenty-three.
There was no classes, but there was online training.
There was no, nothing was offered to this commission in twenty twenty-three, Mark. Even online or, or, nothing was offered to us in twenty twenty-three. The only time, the only time we were made offers for training was in January of twenty twenty-four.
I respectfully disagree. In July, starting in July, we had put emails out with links to various training events. What that actually meant in terms of having to complete it by that deadline date, but it appears that that was a, was a deadline. And I think, as I said when I had a conversation with you, Jeff, my understanding was, and, and I think that's still true, it's not, it's up to the town to, it's up to the town to not certify, but to register what training has taken place. And the thought process is, anything that takes place, even though it's not in twenty twenty-three, will help to satisfy those requirements. So again, we're going forward with the training that we're putting together specifically for ZBA. It will occur in the next, again, first quarter, I'd say by, by March of, by March of, in the next couple of months. So we will use that and, and certify or say to the, to the town council that, in fact, you folks have, have taken, have taken part of that. It's meant to be in person, so we'll set up a, a date with you to, to have that occur.
So, so could we?
How do we know what?
So, so with that said, could we hold March twenty-seventh as a training class and don't take any applications and hold the training class that night?
I will, I will, if, if that is agreeable to you guys, then I will set that up.
But it, but we, I'd like to know.
If there's like one application, we could still.
Legally, don't you have to move that? You can't put off an application.
No, I can't legally.
If you have no meeting, if we, we're.
But if there is no meeting, but even if there is.
We're allowed to schedule a meeting that is strictly for training during the year once. You can't do it more than once, but you can, you're allowed to, by the state, schedule a meeting for training only, no application. So that would get put off due to that.
Well, you could schedule a special meeting and not, and not hear any applications. I mean, your schedule is somewhat flexible, right? It's at the whim of applications at any rate. So you can schedule a special meeting just for that purpose.
How about classes that are, go towards this? We have no idea. I'm with Jeff. I got nothing except for one thing for training back in July or whenever. And the, the asking us to go to the dinner. Other than that, I got nothing. And there's nothing online or anywhere else that's for ZBA. Now, we could, so what zoning classes or what classes are there that would get us to what we need for a ZBA commission?
So part of, part of what is required is one hour of training on affordable housing.
That's the only one that's, that's there. We know that.
Okay.
Other than that, there's nothing that's.
That was offered, that's offered by.
What are the other three hours supposed to come from?
That's, that's offered by West Cog. And again, I'm almost positive we sent out a link to that. It was, it came to our attention in December, admittedly, and we sent out that link for that. That included also the training for conservation commissions, which ironically enough aren't part of that requirement, which is only applies to zoning and ZBAs. So one hour is for, is on affordable housing. If you view that West Cog link, it's for an hour, and that would satisfy that part of it. The, we will make available to you those other, those other links that are to other portions of the training. And the, what we're working on is very specific to ZBAs, because that's, I believe that's what you asked for. So instead of, instead of something general that applies to zoning, although, having said that, you know, you, you tell us what you, what you need, but the thought was that what you were asking for was something specific to ZBA, and that's what we're creating.
So you're asking us to take training that you haven't even created what we're supposed to take?
No, no, no.
That doesn't make any sense.
You're going to apparently schedule a meeting for what we're specifically going to provide that's specific to ZBA. There are other more general courses that are geared towards zoning and will presume to include some of ZBA as well that are currently available online. And you could avail yourselves of those trainings. We will resend those links to you so that you have them available, and that will also go to satisfy the, the training.
I've got a question. So that West Con link, I, I didn't, I think it's a, and there was a video, but it was also a, like a printout of a lecture or something. How did Ohio, so I read the, the lecture, how do I apply that to my hour?
So that's what's very unclear and how the state is silent. They leave it up to the town to certify, I'd use the term certify, in some manner that commissioners have actually done the training. You could, you could send an email or we could create a letter that you could sign.
I just didn't know.
Yeah, it's very, it's very, it's very loosey goosey in terms of how it's just left up to the town to how that is recorded. So if you send us an email saying, you know, I listened to the link and I viewed that video, we will put that in the record.
That's my point. I don't, I don't like the videos.
I'm sorry?
I, I objected to this whole mess. It's not the, the whole mess, you know, what I'm doing to this continuing application, because it's, they make these videos, it's just indoctrination. You know, it's just worthless as far as I'm concerned. I would much prefer, like the old days, you give me a writing, I'll read it. I can make notes or ask questions or something. And I'm fine. The link had, had a written one, and that's what I read. But there's no way, if I go on video, you can see that I was on for an hour, but there's no way to see that I read it.
Correct. Correct. And that's what, that's what there's a lot of discussion about.
That I read.
But from that link, that was all that it got you to?
That is all, that's right.
You couldn't get anywhere else from that link. It was just that specific class.
Yeah, that one thing.
Yeah, it doesn't get you anywhere else.
Yeah, no, I know. But that, and that was one of a couple of different, again, I'm not, I don't want to argue with you guys or, you know, if we, if you didn't receive it or.
We just don't understand.
We'll resend, we'll resend the links that, and the trainings that I believe we sent, we'll resend them to you. And they're to online video classes. They're from a variety of organizations, but we'll send those to you. And if you view them and let us know that you did, that will satisfy the requirement.
Is there a list of training classes or videos that are, ZBA is needed to take?
No.
Is there, are there classes that, that we're supposed to pick out of?
Yes.
Do you have that list?
Yes, I believe that's what we sent.
That would be a good start.
You're going to forward those to Merk?
I will. Yep. I will do that. And then in addition to that, we're creating the ZBA specific program that I believe you, you guys asked for, or at least Jeff, you, you represented that you would like the commission to have.
My big question on the affordable housing thing is then, someone from the public's able to come to the zoning board of appeals and say, hey, I want to do this or that and to make affordable housing, and as the zoning board of appeals, we can vary the zoning regulations to accomplish it?
Well, the short answer is no. That what's, that's what we'll, that's what we'll cover with the ZBA, the specifics of, of variances. Again, I know, you know, most folks have been on the board for a while, but it's always good to go over those things, and those are good questions that you could ask during the, during the discussion.
And really, you need to pursue it up the line back to the state, because this is not actually, which is, which is awful, which is awful.
So, so now I'm curious, and I'm going to put Mr. Dalton on the spot. So he's a member of the ZB, and he's also a member of the Inlands Wetlands Commission. So does he need eight hours of training or four?
In the Wetlands Agency, members are exempt from this particular requirement.
Wow.
They do have their own set of guidelines for training, but it's not included specifically here.
So the Wetlands is exempt from the training, but the link that you sent to West Con was affordable housing and inland wetlands. There's two modules.
Right. Well, the, the purpose was not to force you to look at the conservation commission part. It was just to point out that there was a link to an affordable housing one.
No, I, I got it. No, I.
Okay.
Okay, your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.